All right, hello everyone, folks are coming in. Before we get started, I gotta share with you all that the boiler went out today at City Hall. And so it has been a very chilly day. But bravo to Hector who found all the technicians to work on it and fix it so we can be warm again. So I might have a little hat here tonight from wearing a stocking cap all day.
Hi, everybody. Sorry about my outdoor look, I've been out in the cold. I haven't quite warmed up yet.
Beautiful. And Mayor Counsel proceeds to let me know that he will be cutting it close for this meeting tonight to go ahead and get started without him and he should be joining just a few minutes late tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, if everybody else is here, and it looks like we're we are, let's just go ahead and call the special meeting to order December 19th at 4:45. We'll call.
Counsel Clark.
Here.
Counsel Penamara.
Here.
Counsel Crider.
Yeah.
Counsel Bustizo, he will be blighted. Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counsel Per Miller.
Here.
Mayor Ayers Law.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Lucero. One second, I'm just getting my my agenda opened up. So the next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Lucero?
This is a question for the public. Do any attendees who need this meeting translated into Spanish, we ask you to please raise your hand. Esta es una pregunta para el público. Si alguien necesitaría una interpretación, por favor, alce su mano ahora. And we will watch the hands for any raised hands.
Thank you, Lucero. Item number three is additions or corrections to the agenda, anybody? Right, item number four, speakers heard on non-agenda item, are there any speaker request forms? All right, item number five is new business, item 5.1. At this time, I do want to declare that I have property within the Burn Scar and that let's see here. Looking for the language. And for that reason, I am declaring a potential conflict of interest. And Eleanor, or member Penamara's?
Yes, the same situation, I do own property within the Burn Scar and may have a potential conflict of interest.
All right, Steph?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, and thank you all for being here for a special meeting tonight. Getting into the details of urban renewal. Tonight's meeting is specific to declaring the urban renewal boundary, of which we'll base our financial analysis off of, which we'll present on Wednesday at our regular council meeting. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen to start Ted's PowerPoint. And let's see if I can make it full slide. There is a trick to switching it, there we go, display settings, there we go, do you see the full PowerPoint side? I will say we have one in-person meeting and I already lose all my technology touch, so I'm glad it's working. And Lucero, can we show for the record too, the Counselor Bustizo is now present for the council meeting? Okay, so as a reminder to everyone in the room tonight, and for those watching via Zoom or watching later via recording, the Town Urban Renewal Board and now the City Council has been working on an urban renewal plan to really recover and revitalize after the Alameda fire. The process for considering urban renewal is on the board before you. And really that process is drafting a plan, sending it out for public review, making edits at plan, and then considering for adoption. The city has gone through part of this already. We drafted an initial plan, had a review period, and decided to go back to the drawing board for some more adaptations before considering for adoption. So right now, we are back into the drafting of a plan that we will be sending out for public review. When we draft a plan, what we're looking at is the purpose of the plan, the projects that the urban renewal would achieve, what the boundary of the district would be, and then what the financial analysis would be, to see if it's economically feasible to do. So tonight, we're focused on the boundary. And then Wednesday night, we'll be focusing on that financial analysis. And the week after, we'll have an actual plan and report for you all to review to consider sending out that 45-day public review period. So we are still at those initial steps of designing the plan. And in this iteration of the plan, we have really drilled down and focused on recovering from the Alameda fire impacts, using urban renewal as a tool to help our community recover in areas we aren't recovering. Those areas are affordable housing, revitalizing our commercial areas, upgrading city infrastructure in those areas that are coming back with higher pressure on city infrastructure, increasing our residency too, and decreasing our risk of natural disasters such as the fire. So with this mission in mind, I'm gonna go ahead and present to you guys an urban renewal boundary with some potential add-ons for you all to discuss tonight, what you all would like included in the proposal. To kind of just re-ground us of where you all, where we all were, is I want to show what your originally proposed boundary was for urban renewal. This is the one that we first considered six months ago, and it's a blend of properties in the Burn Scar. Properties that would have been considered blighted, and properties earmarked for very specific projects. Looking back to how we have refined our mission for urban renewal, I am making the recommendation that we remove some specific properties as our base scenario to really drill down into the specific projects that we want to achieve specifically on the fire. This slide has a lot of text for those who want to review it later, to understand why different areas have been removed from the base scenario. But I'm gonna jump into just looking at that proposed base scenario. So this is a boundary line that reflects properties that were burnt in the Alameda fire that really are not recovering on their own. Or if they are recovering on their own, could you use some extra investment, for example, in sidewalks, infrastructure upgrades, canopy loss, et cetera, that is not able to occur just by the rebuild themselves? There are parts of the Burn Scar that are not included, such as Oak Valley, Autumn Ridge, and Willow Springs. Those communities are recovering back to what they were and really don't need extra investment to help them kind of cross that rebuild finish line. Also, in this kind of base, and this is the base scenario that I would recommend to Council, we don't additionally limit, are projects that we have outlined that are specific to helping affordable housing return. So that's the Gateway Site owned by the current Town Urban Renewal. There are some large properties that can have whole high-density housing out here, where we would like to do road improvement to make that property more usable by higher density. And then upgrading our railroad crossing to open up the properties on the west side, you're gonna have to check my cardinal directions, on the other side of the railroad district, or of the railroad itself. Any questions just about this base itself? Okay, perfect. So I call this base the kind of the basics. And then looking at specific projects that town is looking to do based on the Alameda fire, I'm gonna walk through some add-ons that Council can decide to include in our draft boundary area. So this add-on would include sections of Wagner Creek and Bear Creek, where town is actively seeking grant funds to clean up the hazardous fuels. And then urban renewal could then be used to help establish a walking path or other similar infrastructure to help us maintain it, so that we don't see that hazard fuels return again. And so what you hear, see here is the additions, the public property areas of Wagner Creek. And being here, and a large loss of Bear Creek, where we'd be looking to establish walking paths once the hazardous fuels are removed. So this would be add-on option number one. Add-on option number two would be adding a large section of the Wagner Creek that is not accessible by public property. So this is a section that runs through, this is our Shady Brook Mobile Estates, and this is the church property on the other side of the creek. So adding in this section to the urban renewal area could help us work with those property owners to see if they would like to have hazard fuels removed and put in. And could also help us use urban renewal funds to support the two properties of here, particularly since Shady Brook is one of our manufactured home parks that survived the fire, as well as the naturally occurring affordable housing areas in town. So really, this add-on number two is making that pathway project full circle by also including the section of the creek. If you look down here, I just want to point out, this section of the creek is not included, in part because it's difficult to, I shouldn't say difficult, adding in the properties down here that are less fire-impacted, because this area of Wagner Creek did have some fire restoration work done prior to the fire, and actually survived or rebounded much better than the other sections of the creek. So this would be an area that the city could help provide walking paths, et cetera, beyond urban renewal. And then add-on number three, so in the fire, we lost a significant amount of our highway commercial and parts of our downtown commercial. That's pink, you see along the core, and one section downtown right here, and then more highway commercial along here. We also lost commercial along with Alley View, but that is recovering strongly. What add-on number three would be to add on the central, the parts of some business district that did not burn, but that do have properties that pay property taxes. And so the idea behind this add-on is that all of our businesses, whether burnt or not burnt, took a hit from the fire. And so by including this area, it would allow us to still support those businesses, or to help develop more commercial property, since we do have some empty lots prior to the fire, to rehouse businesses that lost their homes in the fire as well. And so this would be really getting it helping hit the economic revitalization of the urban renewal goals. I have intentionally, in this Central Business District, removed those pieces of property that are specific to the city. For example, we have City Hall right here, Town Hall down here, Tura owns another Home Street property back here. Those properties were not impacted by the Alameda fire, and so I've not included them in the urban renewal boundary. I will say, this little one is sweepy, the city does own the Debo building, but we rent that out to for-profit businesses, and so we do pay property taxes on there, and so it's included because those businesses would be included in that commercial downtown core. And so those, so really today's discussion that I'd like to throw to you all now is which areas, and which of these add-ons would Council like to include with the urban renewal district, or any other adjustments that you'd like to see made? So my summary slide, and apologies, I did have a typo on this slide with the one I poked it online. Here you see the proposed base, add-on one in blue, add-on two in green, and then add-on three in Central Business District. I will share that all of these add-ons together will still hit us below the 25% max property area. And so with that, I will leave this slide up and return the microphone back to you.
Thank you, Jordan. I just wanted to, you removed Chuck Roberts from the, from all of the options, and without any commentary, do you mind speaking to that?
Yeah, I love to. So this Chuck Roberts was earmarked as a potential site for affordable housing. I know when it was brought to the community pretty soon after the fire, there was very significant community pushback for developing affordable housing there. Since we are designing an urban renewal plan that is to be done on by the public, I'm really trying to design a plan that the public can understand and really support and get behind. And so I felt that removing that property reflected, you know, where the public was feeling about putting affordable housing at, on Chuck Roberts at this time.
I appreciate that, but I have some comments on that if I could make them now. You know, the pushback was based, was really from the Little League, who has a, has a lease that's quite a long lease, actually, that's coming to a close here in the next year or two, if I remember correctly, and my understanding is that they are gonna be relocating out on Culver. And original discussions around this wasn't just around housing, but there was also the potential for discussions about relocating Public Works there, so that, and I don't think there was any assessment or viability done on that, but so that it opens up the current location sort of the greater space in, in Public Works' current location for potentially more housing, either or. And so yeah, I did, I think there are just some circumstances that were not really mentioned.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that context, particularly since I yeah, was not present in the thing with Chuck Roberts was discussed. Um, you know, something, the thing that I'd love to share with that one too is if we were to have a project that deals with a public facility, either building a new public facility or relocating a public facility, we would need to get support from three out of the four most impacted taxing districts. So it would be just another layer that we would want to go through when adopting the plan. And I do want to share, and I'm more than happy to include Chuck Roberts parked back in, if that's what the Council would like to see. I will share with the current basis is, and I believe with Roberts as well, we will have enough flexibility to do amendments to the size, since we are not at the maximum acreage possible for urban renewal. So we would be able to do a 1% change if down the line, new context occurs where a new project opens up, and there would be that flexibility.
That raises a follow-up question for me, and then Counsel Byers, I'll be happy to jump right over to you. So if we were to take Suncrest, the Suncrest area for affordable housing, if that's, if that ultimately was how the plan was built, and Public Works was relocated, would it trigger that process even with or without Chuck Roberts?
I would say if we used urban renewal funds on a public facility, it would trigger that process. And we do have Elaine in the room too. So Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. Any money spent on, if you paid for a Public Works facility with urban renewal funds, you would have to get that approved by three of the four taxing districts levying the permanent rate levy. Only that project, so not the full plan, just that public building project.
Counsel Byers?
My question was answered, thank you.
Counsel Byers? And then Counselor Clark?
My question was answered, thank you.
Oh yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I saw your hand still up. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, um, I just, going back, I gotta jump over to what was on, I think, page five of the packet shows how I believe it's the Anderson Vista property and the, the church at the corner of Rapp Road and 99 are, they were not included in the previous draft boundary, but are included. And I can't remember exactly why, but why they weren't there, and just wondering if you could shed some light on why you do want to include them on this next iteration, this draft.
Yeah, so I believe they were not included last time because the we were trying to make it work without going over the max allowed acreage. And so I think those, by removing those properties, it helped get us below that maximum threshold. You know, I've been, because they are part of the Burn Scar, and they are in neighborhoods that we're seeing higher density occur, where we want to encourage more development to happen. And so I didn't feel the need to exclude them since we weren't reaching our maximum acreage. But we could also keep them moved, if any council members remember, if there was a different reason why they were not originally included.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I remember about the conversation about Anderson Vista was that, that they had their own funding stream and that and that delayed as it is, that they wouldn't be as, you know, reliant on a separate resource as other properties might be, but I understand your rationale for looping them in here.
Counsel Clark, do you have a follow-up question?
I have another one. But I can hold back, see if anybody else has anything.
Go ahead.
So the, the boundaries of the urban renewal have to be confined to the city limits, they can't include an urban reserve, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, I thought that was the case. Yeah, I think that's, that's all I have right now.
Oh, Counsel Clark, I may stand corrected, I'm gonna let Elaine speak on that one.
Okay.
You, you can include an urban reserve, something outside of the city limits, but the county would also have to approve the plan.
Okay. Um, well, let me just say what I was thinking, there at the end of Rapp Road crosses the railroad tracks there, there's a small urban reserve that's meant to allow space to create a safe road junction, right? And, and that's just outside of our city limit, which is why it's an urban reserve. That is, that's what I was thinking about. I guess, depends on whether or not we think the county would support, support that, but I could imagine it being helpful to have that included if, if we thought it, you know, was possible and sound.
Yes, and, and Counsel, just so you know, this, this cherry stem here, while this, you know, Rapp Road was not impacted out here by the fire, the reason exists is to have urban renewal help fund that project, which is to create safety over that railroad crossing, to get access to those other properties. So that is exactly the project that you're thinking of.
Sure, yeah. But, but in likelihood, we, the, the project itself would go into that urban reserve area, right? So in order to complete it, it would probably be a city and, and Tura collaborative effort to do all of the work, right? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel Clark?
Oh, thank you. Oak Valley? What's, what's the, what's the thinking there?
Yeah, so Oak Valley is really returning without the need for any additional investment into Oak Valley itself. They upgraded their own sewer, they have sufficient water lines, they have sidewalks, curb and gutters. They're really already rebuilding completely. At the same time, one of our goals with this redo is to try to take some of the financial impacts off of the other taxing districts. And so by returning Oak Valley to the tax rule, it does help offset what the original projections were for how much taxing districts would lose in tax rep, and would lose in tax revenue that was re-appropriated for urban renewal.
Okay. Can I just keep going, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thanks. At some point, I think their HOA discussed after the fire wanting to pursue another road that would connect up to Public Works, that would allow another potential evacuation route, maybe evacuation only, but but something that would allow more options.
Yeah.
Is that it was, should we consider, you know, an extension, a cherry stem that would cover the area in which that could potentially occur, or has any feasibility exploration been done on that?
Yeah, so Public Works actually has upgraded that road, it's a dirt road, they went ahead, put in a new culvert, and put in an emergency access gate, so the HOA does have an emergency two-way exit entry, if it be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, I wasn't aware of that, I'm glad to hear that. One more, and I think I might be out of, out of ideas for a while, but the, the property on the, on the lower end of Oak Valley that is open and, and adjacent to, and potentially part of Suncrest Park, was there consideration to including that parcel in, in the urban renewal area, or is it in there? I don't know that I could say that it's not, but it might be that little gap right in there, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that parcel is not included. It certainly could be included if a member would want, I'm just trying to think through, you know, what is currently is an undeveloped parcel. I believe Oak Valley has not determined what they would like to see that parcel developed as. I know they've had concern this past year because there was a significant amount of poison hemlock that came back in that area, so they did hire a contractor to know what they could, just to reduce that risk there. But, but yeah, I don't see any reason why that could not included, we have to work with Oak Valley if they would ever want any improvement done with urban renewal funds on that.
Yeah, yeah. It's just yeah, so it's a, it's a parcel I've just had in my mind since the park's master planning process, and it seems, I, I, I can't, you know, run down all the permutations one way or the other, but it seems like worth considering, whether or not that would be helpful.
I have a follow-up question about Oak Valley, if we're taking Oak Valley out, how are we recovering the costs for the road improvements?
Which road improvement are you thinking of there?
Yeah, the road improvement for the second access, or the second the second exit for the HOA.
So the city has already done the road improvements to make that a drivable road in the event of an emergency.
How are we recovering the cost for that?
It was very minimal cost, we just had to replace a small culvert, so that it could be drive, driven over by heavy vehicles.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Is that, in other words, we just did it at the cost of the city?
Yeah, we did, for the benefit of having an emergency exit.
Well, I mean, we don't provide that service to any of the other properties, and I'm just wondering, if it's, if it's at minimal cost, I mean, that's not something I don't, I don't want to set a precedence for, but is there a way that we can get a report on that?
You're looking for a report of the cost, or a report of the kind of emergency travel lane that we've established post-fire?
Probably both, I mean, maybe just a staff report.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that at a future meeting.
That's great, you can queue it up, it's no hurry, I just, I, I'm curious what, what all that entails, and if that's part of like a transportation service that the city's providing, or was it on city property?
It was.
Yeah, great, okay. Yeah, great. Okay.
Um, and I, yeah, and I will just share just for council knowledge, um, since it's on top of mind right now. So the city had a dirt road already connecting Oak Valley out from Public Works property. And we've also established, um, uh, emergency exit through gateway, the Genghis neighborhood. They also only had one way in, one way out.
Yeah, I, given that it's on city property that I, I really don't even need a report. I, uh, I, um, when we were talking about an additional road previously, it was an actual improvement. So I just didn't have, you know, the clear, I, I didn't have a clear picture of what you were talking about. So, yeah, I'm fine. Uh. Any other questions? Counselor or member penumorous?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so I'm looking at the extension down Wagner Creek, um. Yeah, so, so is the idea that there would be a walking path that would extend all the way down, which I think is, as folks, if folks don't remember, is, uh, part of our uh, transportation system plan, the Wagner Creek Greenway, I think is what it was called. Is that, is, is that something that looks, uh, feasible?
Yeah, I will say both our transportation system plan as well as our parks master plan calls for walking path to be built along Wagner Creek to connect up with Bear Creek's Greenway. Um, the way the parks plan and transportation system plan has it designed to do it in segments, um, so we have time for development. In terms of feasibility, I will admit it's tough to know because Wagner Creek is so full of hazardous fuels. Um, it's difficult to know what the actual bank space is, um, et cetera. And so the city is pursuing, um, we have applied for about a 1.4 million dollar grant to clean up the hazardous fuels and to plant some native vegetation, um, to help prevent hazardous fuels from returning in the future. Um, that grant is through FEMA. We are in the consideration process for it. And if awarded, Business Oregon, the state will actually do the 25% cost match on our behalf. So what urban renewal will be used for would be to actually establish the path. Um, once that area is clear, cleared up, if it is possible to establish a path.
Um, if I could follow up, uh, during a meeting, uh, with the Safe Routes to School folks, um, one of the things that the superintendent brought up is, is the need to, for, for folks in Stony Brook, for kids to be able to have a safe way, um, to walk to school. It seems that if we could, you know, get, uh, a path going along, um, I, I hear what you're saying. I've seen those banks. Um, but to get a path going along into, into the neighborhood down by Joseph Park, then it's, you know, it's very safe walking, um, through those neighborhoods with sidewalks, uh, to the schools. Um, I, I think this is, it's really good timing because, uh, safe routes to schools while those construction grants, we can't use them for anything that's not in the public right of way. So this wouldn't qualify. Um, the planning that the consultants are doing now, um, can actually, uh, help, um, you know, explore, uh, the possibilities and, um, pave the way for other grants. I can't resist that pun, pave the way, um, but for other grants from ODOT that actually would be specifically, um, for walking paths. So I think this would just be, um, uh, check a lot of boxes and just be really helpful on many levels. So I'm glad to see that, that in there. I'm, I'm just wondering if whether it's, uh, whether it might be, uh, if, if it's wide enough, um, to take full advantage of, of the possibility. So I'm thinking especially around where the railroad, uh, crosses overhead. Um, whether it might be worth it to extend a little bit if, if, if that were helpful, um, but I, but like I said, there, there should be other, um, funding possibilities if, if that starts to turn into something engineering, uh, feasible from an engineering perspective.
Great. Really glad to hear. Jordan, I have a question about affordable housing and, um, and I, I don't know that we ever did it analysis previously, but it seems to me that there was, uh, some sort of measurement where, um, we had a discussion about how much, uh, naturally occurring affordable housing was lost and trying to, to, in fact, I think at one point in time, we even discussed it with you, trying to like recover the affordable housing. And, um, you know, the more I've given that thought, um, the more I realize that it's not just those pockets of neighborhoods that are obviously, you know, like talent mobile estates, for example, um, and that will be recovered, um, in the long run, but it's also just how much affordable housing there was along Talon Avenue um, that are, has since been replaced with developers buying properties and building single-family homes and and et cetera, changing the, really changing the face and the value of that whole area and reducing the stock of affordable housing. I can't imagine trying to measure that, um, because it's so hard to, you know, gather that information of oh, if you go along Talon Avenue, which, which of those houses were kind of older homes and, but I can think of a bunch of them. Uh, older homes and, and probably more affordable rentals. And certainly there were some down on, um, oh, I'm trying to think of the name of the street. It's kind of close to Anderson Vista, but, um, um, anyway, with all of that said, um, you know, uh, one of the things that occurs to me is really just creating strategies that, um, that really um, accounts for not just what's been rebuilt, uh, because what's been rebuilt for the most part isn't affordable. It's, it's really, you know, we're, we're seeing the gentrification of our city. There's no question. And, um, I, I would hope that, um, we would be able to come to some sort of, and now, uh, create, uh, per- perform some sort of analysis that, um, understands that we are going to exceed the density of our housing. Um, but we're not, uh, it's, it seems likely that we're not going to exceed the, the recovery of our affordable housing. And I hope this makes sense when I say, uh, cause I am getting to a point um, that if there's an excess of rebuild, that we count that excess more on the, uh, more on the, uh, you know, market rate housing rather than, and still try to recover uh, the amount of affordable housing that we lost. And, um, I don't, you know, I, I don't know how, how that formula uh, could be laid out. I mean, I don't know how you could, uh, to really calculate that, but, um, I think about how much affordable housing was lost and how much of it was replaced with market rate housing. We still have an affordable housing loss, even though we have recovered a lot of housing. And try, I, I feel like urban renewal is an opportunity for us to do that. It is why I have a little bit of heartburn of Chuck Roberts Park uh, coming off of, uh, off of this inventory, because I think that part of what we need to do is make sure that we have as much land availability as we can, because that's been the problem from the beginning. Um, and if we have an adequate supply of land to build back the affordable housing that we lost, including uh, all of those places that have been replaced with market rate housing, I, I'd be satisfied with that, but, um, I, I don't know how we're going to be able to capture that. Uh, capture that calculation. Do you guys have any thoughts on that? Have you, have you worked on that at all? And if so, can you, can you share a little bit about what, where you're going with that?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm, I'm more than happy to and love to, and I'm, I'll do verbal, but I'm also happy to provide this in a, in a report as well. So you have numbers in front of you. Um, affordable housing is still the base core component of this urban renewal plan. Um, we know that was the original and most core goal of urban renewal all along. So we're really trying to make sure that stands out in the forefront. And so I really want to assure council that that is still remains true for this redraft of the urban renewal plan. So the mayor's right, it's very difficult to look back in time and see which of our housing, particularly rental housing, was naturally occurring affordable housing. And naturally occurring affordable housing means not subsidized by the government, but is at a, at a level, uh, where your monthly housing costs did not overburn you by more than 30% if you made less than 80% of the area median. Um, that's all the statistical will say about what defines affordable housing. But the easiest estimate of naturally occurring affordable housing is really manufactured homes. Um, because manufactured homes, unlike spilt houses, they depreciate in value over time rather than appreciate. And so the cost of keeping and maintaining a manufactured home is lower in terms of property tax, in terms, et cetera. Um, so often the monthly cost of maintaining manufactured housing that is older is naturally occor- occurring affordable housing. So in the Almeida fire, we lost 233 manufactured homes. Um, a little more than 300 of those were in manufactured homes. What we're seeing on the ground now is the manufactured homes are coming back in. They're brand new. And so they're so expensive, you know, I think a double ride is going a little over $200,000 to purchase. Uh, is it, they are no longer going to be classified as affordable housing. There'll be housing that's more workforce housing. So if we're making between 80% and 100% of AMI, you know, teachers, nurses, et cetera, it'll naturally become that type of housing. So really, when we look at having affordable housing return, we're really looking at how can really increase the, of subsidized housing. Uh, because that is the quickest way to get affordable housing, rather than having affordable housing that occurs over time because of how old the housing stock is. So if we, if we say, hey, we want the 300 units that we replace with affordable housing in our community, I think that is a great, you know, minimum that our goal is to try to reach. I will say outside of the urban renewal area and unrelated to the housing stock loss, we do expect about 100 affordable units to come online in the next few years. We have Renon's class developing, which is 72 units, and we have a senior affordable housing project with 22 apartments, um, going as well. So that puts us around the 200 unit mark to just recover what was lost in the, in the Almeida fire. Gateway site, um, that has been estimated to be able to hold 90 to 120 affordable units, if that is the direction that it is developed. And so that is already a piece of property that has a lot of, um, potential for, for our, our affordable housings off. Another developable property is up here at Suncrest. This, this is technically four properties. Um, the first two have urges, but the second two, um, are still developed. Really potential that we can encourage affordable housing there. It's high density area, a very large lot, um, flat space, great location, could have another substantial amount of units. And then same with doing this project to open up the access to more land. Um, talent city limits and future growth is really on the other side of the railroad. And so that also is available land. Um, so that we're looking at right now with this plan for some quick numbers. We will go over that more on Wednesday when we look at the financial analysis and the objects that have been earmarked to her. Mayor, hopefully that gets a little bit, we've been thinking out and noodle on, and I look forward to talking more on Wednesday about it as well.
Yeah, it does. I just have a follow-up, um, and that is that I, I still think that, um, we, um, we um, may be missing an opportunity by removing Chuck Roberts from the equation and, um, the Chuck Roberts piece. And, um, I, I take, uh, your point that you made earlier that, you know, if we, if we did a public, uh, pro- if we did a public project, a, a public property project, um, that we would need to go, uh, back out and, and get jurisdictional, um, approval for that. A, I think that's a good idea. And, and B, it may not be that we actually ever do that. Um, so, uh, it, it strikes, it strikes me that if we want to be able to optimize all of the space on Suncrest, we will have to move public works one way or the other, uh, whether we have that with urban renewal money or not. Um, and whether we get permission or not, um, where Chuck Roberts Park um, does, uh, provide us with some usable land and, um, and, uh, I don't think, um, there's a downside, uh, to it. If, if we never use it, where I do think there's an upside if it turns out that that piece of property so close to um, so close to the downtown, uh, walkable to, um, the park, walkable to transportation, still offers us opportunity that I think might be a little short sighted just to out and out remove it.
Yeah, and if you don't, oh, remember.
Oh, that's all right. I was just going to move on to Council Prestizo, but if you have a comment, please do.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, council, the, this boundary is entirely up to you and what we'll raise our financial analysis on. So we are, um, I'll be looking just for consensus tonight on what we want to include. More than happy to include Chuck Roberts. Do you want to just remind council to that, um, we will be able to do minor amendments, um, if projects open in the future. So say the community conversation changes around Chuck Robert Parks, that'll also be an opportunity to include that free in the boundary.
Good to know, and that's a good point. And that would be a minor amendment, right? Because it's ju- uh, there's no housing in it or anything like that. Um, Council Clark? Then I, uh, let's see, I think I saw Prestizo, Clark, and then Byers.
Yeah, thank you. Um, two questions. One is, Jordan, when you were talking about the gateway and the amount of affordable housing, i- is that including the, the, the plans that also have business and other things there, or is that just turning the whole thing into affordable housing?
No, that includes having the commercial development as well.
Okay. And my other question is along the lines of what you just said. Um, and you may have answered it well enough. I was just curious what the, you know, how rigorous is the process for that minor amendment for Chuck Rob- for Chuck Roberts or somewhere else?
Yeah, and I would love to hand that one off to Elaine if she's comfortable answering.
I am. Uh, as long as you are adding property that is under 1% of the original acreage of the urban renewal area, a minor amendment can be passed just by a resolution of your urban renewal agency. So it's very easy. Once you get over 1%, it becomes a substantial amendment that goes through the whole process. So that's when it becomes more difficult.
So is that 1% cumulative or is it just per minor amendment?
It's not. It, it is a one-time 1%. So let's say you use half a percent, the first, uh, minor amendment, and the next time you get up to 1%. The third time you want to add any property, it becomes a substantial amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Council Clark and then Council By.
Yeah, I, uh, just one clarifying point on that, um, on this discussion and then have something separate, but, uh, um, regarding approval by three of the four, I think it's a three of the four taxing, that would be at the, at the project level, not at including it in the boundary at this time. That, that you would, you would jump through that hoop at the time that you were attempting to, uh, initiate a project. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, just wanted to be clear on that. Uh, the other point I wanted to, uh, raise is that, um, the previous draft included, um, a, a strip down the middle of 99 that, um, you can see it, just tiny little thin line that would allow us to uh, modify or potentially, uh, use urban renewal to add additional, uh, medians to accommodate, um, more trees or, uh, other pedestrian protecting, um, uh, medians in, in, you know, as necessary as that, uh, develops. And I don't see that in the, uh, in your current draft.
Yes, so this small strip along Highway 99 was something that we could not legally describe, given the way legal descriptions by surveyors work. Um, so the recommendation is if urban renewal would like to engage in doing projects of establishing trees or other improvements along Highway 99, so at that time to do an amendment, um, where you just cross-section that partial or that piece where you want to do the improvement.
Uh, okay. And so the presumption is that even numerous medians wouldn't add up to, uh, would be minimal, minimal amount of space, far less than 1%, right? And is that, is that the thinking that, well, geez, you know, even if we wanted to do three new medians, that's only going to add, you know, 0.01 acres or, or something like that. Is that? Is that where you're going with it?
That is where I'm going with it. Um. That is where I'm going with it. Um, because there is no way for our surveyor to legally describe, including just the middle of the highway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so including the entire highway would be an significant amount of acreage, and so doing project-based um, changes to the urban renewal was the recommendation.
How much, how much acreage would, would that add? I mean, we would still be safely below two hundred and twelve acres, I think, I, when I added up what you had, but the uh, uh, add-ons and everything, it came to about one eighty-five.
Yeah, about one eighty-five. I can ask Nikki to calculate what that highway acreage would be.
Okay, I mean, I would be curious, it doesn't, it wouldn't, um, I mean, because it's, we're talking about a public highway, it's not um, it's not the kind of thing that would affect the tax base, right, or the other taxing districts appreciably, right? So um, yeah, I would just uh, I would just want to consider. I mean, you know, those are high priority projects in my mind, um, improving Highway ninety-nine. You know, uh, uh, addressing the concrete jungle effect and, and uh, the urban heat island effect um, down there, um, and if it's, if, if it, you know, has the potential to make things go smoother, um, and we have plenty of space, I just want to consider the, the idea of, of adding um, the full width of the highway.
I have a follow-up question on that. Is that ODOT's jurisdiction?
It is ODOT's jurisdiction. Talent currently has a agreement with them that we maintain the medians. Um, but any planting that we do in the median does have to be approved by ODOT.
Okay, uh, Council, uh, Council Clark, um, did I, uh, did you complete your questions?
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Byer?
Um, thank you. My main question was answered, but I do want to go back to the previous topic and just state that I think it is um, I think it is. Let me rephrase. I would support doing a potential amendment down the road to add Chuck Roberts Park to the urban renewal boundary because of what that communicates about our intentions with this project. I really appreciate Jordan's reframing of this in just the out, in the communication around the project and really capturing our desire to use this tool as a way to help our community recover after a natural disaster. And I think that um, you know, we've, we've got a lot of really um, amazing potential projects on the table in front of us, and by looking at adding Chuck Roberts Park as a potential amendment and not as a set addition, I think it helps communicate the scope of projects that we are looking at on our plate and all of the potential incredible things that can happen.
I'm curious, as a follow-up, it looks like a substantial amendment, not, not a minor. That does not look like one percent. Am I wrong?
I would have to run the calculations um, to clearly answer that one.
Thank you. And uh, amendments to the um, to the boundary can happen at any meeting, correct? Okay, Council Prestizo?
Wait, Mayor, can I do a quick correction on that one? To clarify, Mayor, do you mean once the urban renewal is established or as we're designing this urban renewal plan?
As we're designing. Uh, yeah, I, I understood that the amendments after, after would be like an official an official use of that one percent or, or less. It sounds like there's a lot of competition for that one percent.
Yes, we can make changes up until the moment that council considers um, an ordinance, or I would say until council considers sending that to the ballot.
Thank you.
Um, whatever is decided tonight, though, will be the core financial analysis um, that we'll go ahead and look at on Wednesday.
Council Prestizo?
Yeah, thanks. Just uh, I did a quick calculation on the median for ninety-nine. And if you had a fifteen-foot wide um, median at every hundred feet, that would be point oh three four of an acre. So if you just go by hundreds of feet, you can get an idea. We're not talking about very much um, acreage to do that at all. That was it.
Thank you. And then Council Prestizo, since I'm assuming you have GIS at your fingertips right now. Um, what the land surveyor told us is that he would need to take in all of Highway ninety-nine. Um, so from sidewalk to sidewalk, um, to do the legal description of that area.
And so that would be, that legal description would be what we would have to include if we did the amendment?
So the legal, the legal description, we is required to be with the report um, that we send to the ballot and then adopt. What we could do is we could do um, segments of Highway ninety-nine crosswise, as long as it was the entire diameter of the highway.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking if we wanted to bring it in as an amendment down the road, it wouldn't be anywhere. And we could bring in quite a lot of road without getting to that one percent.
Got it, yes, again that.
Council Clark?
So Jordan, you're saying in order to, 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 to do work in a median, you would have to um, add in a whole, like a segment of the highway curb to curb that included that?
If we want to use urban renewal dollars.
Yeah.
For the median, yes.
Okay.
Because every time we change the boundary, we have to legally describe it, and the land surveyor needs to have specific property lines from which to make his legal description. And that's the reason why it's, they strongly recommend doing the entire width um, of Highway ninety-nine.
Okay, um, can I confirm that the uh, the boundary as they're shown here um, starts at the curb of this, of the highway? Is that, because what I'm, where I'm going is that um, the potential to modify the flow of the sidewalk potentially to accommodate more tree planting spaces along there, um, um, and so I'm just wondering, is, as it's drawn now, does it go, go all the way to the curb?
I will verify that with Nikki um, tomorrow, but yes, I believe it does go all the way to the curb.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I'm, I hate to beat a dead horse here, but uh, I, I have, you know, I, I continue to be concerned about the piece of of property that's in Chuck Roberts and whether or not that would actually be a minor amendment. Um, is that uh, data available? You know, I know you guys use models when you, when you add something in, uh, it, it calculates the acreage when you take it out, it calculates the acreage. Is that something that's a, um, available for us as we're talking about?
Yeah, you all don't mind me just uh, not looking into a camera. I can go ahead and pull that information up while other questions are being answered.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Jordan. Uh, Council Penamras?
Well, I'm looking at the same horse you are. Um, I'm wondering, because I, you know, I also think that in many ways, it's, would be wonderful to explore um, there, that area for potential for some affordable housing development. And I'm, and that, but I'm thinking that, you know, the city owns that land. And I'm wondering if, if uh, an affordable housing, uh, a nonprofit developer, say, came you know, up with a really nice plan and, and uh, wanted to work with the city on that. What um, could, you know, is it enough, is it enough that the city actually owns the land to be able to make it pencil out for a nonprofit developer? I'm trying to balance in my mind how much having um, Tura also uh, have that in the boundary would, would help um, uh, that kind of, that kind of a development become more economically feasible. I mean, it obviously would help, but I'm trying to kind of figure out like, you know, the sweet spot, basically, so um, if uh, anybody has uh, thoughts, thoughts on um, h- how to think about that.
Um, thank Council Penamras, I have a couple shots to share, and then I can also share the total acreage for Chuck Roberts. Um, so the my, to the housing authority and to other nonprofit affordable housing developers, as well as Ash's program. You know, the biggest challenge uh, is finding property that is a large enough size to build to scale. Um, and then also that is at a price point that typically the most expensive part is to purchase the property of that, that size. And so, Council Penamras, yes, that the city could likely help support that project without the help of urban renewal. Um, if that became something that the city wanted to follow that path on. And I will share upper half of Chuck Roberts, uh, is six point seven four. I know it was originally included in the partial amount of that acreage. If we had about a two hundred acre uh, what you gonna call it, two hundred acre total district area that we would only want to bring in two acres total to stay under minor amendment or go through the major amendment process specific for that process, for that project.
I just have some follow-up comments on that.
Just a point of privilege. I had a hard time hearing that. I was wondering if you could say, because your microphone was doing that thing. Could you just say that again? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I'll do a quick screen share so that if you can't hear me, you can see it.
Jordan, your, your microphone is failing.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Our trapezoid is six point seven four acres. Um, and I do believe it was included in the boundary was a portion of that during the original thing, and so that would be greater than a minor amendment if the entire acreage was wanted to be brought in.
I, I just have a couple of comments I want to make on this, um, because we had so much discussion around this, and I just don't want the discussion to get lost all these months later. Um, that, that said, you know, um, is, as long as whatever decision is made is, is based on as much information as we can put together. Um, I do appreciate the point that the rap road piece is gonna lead to a bigger piece of land, but that's all privately owned land. And um, and the owners on, on both ends of that railroad district um, master plan um, are, are both uh, private developers that are interested in, in doing projects there, so I do think it's worthwhile for more housing. I just don't think affordable housing is in, in the future there, um, certainly not on Belmont. Um, uh, with that said, though, um, you know, I, I, I've learned a few things as I, as I've um, been working with developers, uh, especially on my tiny little piece of property, and I know recently uh, Gil from Magnolia Homes said that the purchase price of the land is the least of the issues. I think, though, what I agree with Jordan is that a land availability is the greatest of the issues, and, um, and we've heard that over and over and over again. Um, I think uh, it's sort of a half dozen of one to six of the other, if everything was equal, having the urban renewal doesn't obligate us to that um, to, to any, any degree. It doesn't obligate us, us, us to optimize, um, you know, or utilize uh, you know, utilize the most that urban renewal has, um, whereas if it's not there, there is no urban renewal contribution of any kind if, if it were to be needed, uh, without a major amendment. Um, so unless I, unless it grossly impacts um, the um, the overall acreage, um, and um, you know, I mean, maybe uh, caps us out or something like that, I could see um, deeper discussion being had, but otherwise, I just think it's an important um, piece to have in there for future consideration. Um, I do see uh, the idea of having a partnership of the city who owns the land and urban renewal, um, who has district around the land and, and a, a nonprofit uh, giving us a really great opportunity that I don't think we'll have otherwise. So that's the last thing I want to uh, try to um, uh, try to say on the subject tonight, but I did, I definitely think what, what's key here is just the land, the total land availability for building affordable housing and our, our ability to have some stake in the game where we can uh, we can um, have influence over the project, uh, to me is the overall consideration. I appreciate your points, uh, Jordan, and I certainly do see why um, it, it has become a arbitrary piece um, in this discussion, but just uh, want to make sure everybody remembers the full context of the conversation as it happened uh, back in the day. Um, all right, um, so anybody else have any more comments or, or questions? Council, Council Clark?
Yeah, I did uh, just a quick look um, uh, on uh, Jackson County's um, GIS site, um, looks like the, the length of Highway ninety-nine um, there comes to around eighteen, nineteen acres in total. Uh, that's, you know, quick uh, quick measurement, um, but, and it, you know, the, the map has parcel bound part, uh, parcel boundaries on it, and I know they're not um, considered to be uh, legally exact um, on the, as they are on the website, but I'm seeing um, I'm seeing uh, stuff and plants um, that appear to be outside of those parcels that are adjacent and potentially in that right of way. So the question back to where exactly is that line as it's drawn now, and would it allowed us to um, work, uh, work with the margins of ninety-nine in terms of the sidewalk and tree planting is a, is a, is a is a question that I really want to see answered and um, and yeah, um, if we were to add in that, you know, that much territory, that would put us closer to that uh, into the neighborhood of that uh, um, twenty-five percent of land area, but it still wouldn't be right on top of the, right on top of the uh, the maximum, so there would still be some wiggle room uh, beyond, beyond adding another um, nineteen acres. So uh, anyway, just wanted to throw that out for more consideration.
Uh, Jordan, your hand was up next.
Thank you. Um, okay, just to give council a sense of where we're at, if all of the areas that are in a color are included in the boundary, that's hundred and eighty-six acres. Um, if you want to include Robert Park, that's another six and a half acres. And then if you'd like to include um, Highway ninety, that would be another eighteen to nineteen acres. Um, all said, I think that puts us right back at a hair's breadth under the maximum that we can have, which I think is two eleven point something, so we'll say two twelve. Um, so if you all would like to make those changes, we could, we could do that. I will say we lose some flexibility um, down the line, if we want to change the urban renewal area in the future for new projects. Uh, we would have to remove an area to be able to include additional area. Um, just an FYI, what I would like to do, just to help, um, I think for Mayor, my suggestion is to first get feedback on if Council would love to include if, or all of these add-ons. And then from there, to include Robert's um, or the Highway ninety-nine corridor. And then two additional potential add-ons, um, so that we can just get established what to move forward with. And Council Clark, I can go and give you the answer about the sidewalks. I will say it will not impact the financial analysis, because it would be publicly owned area. So my request tonight would be to move forward with the boundary selection. So my request tonight would be to move forward with the boundary selection, um, so that we can run that financial analysis. And then we can do that, um, small adjustment to the final boundary Wednesday night as well.
I just would say what on a technical, from a technical standpoint, we already have a, an adopted district, proposed district. So the proposed dis- district has been, has been adopted. So, uh, and from my mind, Chuck Roberts is actually a removal, not an add-on. And, um, uh, I do, I, I'm fairly certain we, and Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, we voted on um, advancing a, a district and these changes represent, um, uh, good changes, but I just don't see it as an add-on. I see it as a removal.
Great. However, yeah, how, on a phrase, I just would like some clarity so that we could run the numbers tomorrow.
Yeah. Um, I saw Council, uh, Penomera's hand, uh, member Penomera's hands go up.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Um, it just, so, so Chuck Roberts being publicly owned land, would that affect the financial in or out? It, it shouldn't find, affect the financial projections, right?
Um, it should not affect the financial projections. I will say just to throw a wrench into this, into this loop is that I do need to get a legal description made. Um, ASAP, and so since we're over the holidays, I would like to get that official boundary sent off as soon as I can to get that legal description. Um, so in that reason, I would love for us to be able to decide, um, this week if possible on that boundary we want to move forward with.
Um, can I ask a, a follow-up? Um, yeah, so let's say there, I do remember the parcels being weird. Um, let's say we got just say part of an area of Chuck Roberts that was eventually say decided to be, um, used for, uh, useful for an affordable housing project. Is there an advantage to Tura even owning not the entirety, but part of it to, to help contribute towards, for example, uh, infrastructure costs? Um. Or does it have to really be the whole site?
So the way, you know, the current programs that we're setting up based off of affordable housing programs elsewhere would be we could help offset costs of affordable housing through doing SDC. Um, either waivers or deferrals. And so that one would depend on what portion of the affordable housing project falls within the urban renewal boundary. I will say it will be much easier if just the entire piece of property was in there to save having to do those calculations. Um. And so I think that would be kind of the largest benefit there. Um, or if, you know, the board was in shit in establishing a grant or loan program for affordable housing. Although I will say most government subsidized affordable housing has access to larger scale federal grant funding that I think talent would be able to help provide to the same level.
Okay, thanks.
Council Clark?
Yeah, um, I, I, uh, support, support including all of the areas, um, in the multicolored map. I am s- still considering, um, the conversation about Chuck Roberts Park. Um, in the context of, you know, how things have changed in the past, um, couple of years here. And the context of this moving forward and, and I'm still thinking about it. I would point out that, um, the parcel, the parcel boundary of that six point seven four acre parcel cuts across the lower two ball fields. Um, and I think in the previous iteration on the previous map, it shows that is squared off, but that squared off portion on the east northeast boundary is not square or it's not. Um, it's, uh, yeah, it, the, the parcel boundary cuts through the vault, through, through, uh, through at least one, um, or partially through the other, uh, yeah, cuts through, uh, just a part of the one to the southeast and cuts off about half of the one on the northwest. Um, so just to be aware of, uh, be aware of that. Yeah, there it is.
Can, can you expand on that a little bit, Council Clark? I don't understand the point of that. I, the ball fields aren't
So, yeah.
Moved.
Right, no, the, the context, and, and it may not be a thing, it may not be a thing, but, um, so there's a topographic break there, right? The ball fields are on a higher elevation. And then it drops down to the regular park, but that line of the extra s, edge of the parcel, yeah, if you can turn on, um, uh, uh, um, aerial photo, that'll speak to it, but in the previous edition, we modified the boundary and I don't know, I don't know how it was legally described. Because we just cut a line right there across the northeast side of those ball fields and that's the way it got drawn. Um, so I don't know if that is, um, you know, if that is a legit way to, you know, to claim part, a portion of a parcel. Um, but that is how it was drawn before and I just wanted to clarify that, um, that, uh, that the parcel boundary does not include all of those water fields and it doesn't doesn't run along that topographic break like you might expect it to.
Thank you for that. Now I understand.
Yeah. I just, I, what, what about including part of a parcel? Is that, is that legally describable? At what point does it become? You know, so cumbersome that the surveyor or whatever says, uh, we can't do this or?
Elaine, go for it.
So, especially on a parcel where there's no taxable value. It's dear to divide a parcel and the assessor's office hates it when you divide a parcel that has taxable value because they have to figure out how to attribute that value. In this case, the surveyor would have to, um, set a mark, so X amount of feet from the northwest boundary, probably, you know, they, they could do something like that. It is much easier, cheaper to do a legal description on a lot that a parcel that's already defined. If they have to make a definition of the parcel, then, um, they, they can do that. It costs, it costs them a little more and the assessor's office has to approve it. It's doable. We've done it before and it's especially doable in this case, I think, because it's not taxable.
Okay. And I
Member Clark?
Given that we are, um, discussing, um, two portions of publicly owned property. Um, is there, uh, is there, uh, any problem with going forward with the, um, with the financial assessment? And changing, I mean, we discussed that we could change the boundary later, but before, you know, before, uh, before it's final, it's not final, um, but um, is it okay to go ahead and run the financial numbers and still consider to deliberate, um, about the pros and cons of those, uh, areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Member Penomera's?
Yeah, um, speaking of deliberating on the areas, so it feels to me like that there's two areas. There's the, um, there's Highway ninety nine. And then there's Chuck Roberts. Regarding Highway ninety nine, I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, uh, the TGM grant. The, um, revisioning of ninety nine, I'm thinking about ODOT plans, and I'm just wondering how much, um, well, first of all, I want to say I'm, I'm full of support of the vision of getting as many trees in there, um, as possible. I'm just wondering if, um, how necessary it is to have Tatura, um, uh, playing a part in that. Or are there already, um, you know, ODOT or other regional, um, plans that could, that could support, uh, that work to the extent that we want it?
Who are you asking that question of? Member Penomera and, um, and then, uh, I, I would just piggyback by asking Jordan as you're asking that question, if we can get, uh, some information from the TGM. Is it far enough along where we could figure some of that out?
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so the TGM project is specific to assessing how we can bring in more mixed use along the Highway nine or ninety nine corridor and more multi-acting transportation use. So more biking, walking and busing. It is very specific in saying it is not recommending changes to Highway ninety nine itself. It's simply helping us create a vision for a long ninety nine, and then they'll be doing a code review to say how well our code helps support create that vision. Um, so TGM, you know, beyond identifying where potential crosswalks might be, um, well, is not paying a big vision on what Highway ninety nine itself would look like. They are not proposing changes to Highway ninety nine. Um, but I do want to say the Council of Health has a good point is that urban renewal is not the only funding tool. Um, to get things done here in the city that we do have a, a city resources, the grant opportunities, et cetera. Um, and so, you know, as always, the, the city as a whole always worked towards better in our community, um, whether it's in urban renewal or out.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, Member Prestizo?
Yeah, um, I'm just thinking as we talk about putting trees in the median of a highway. Only to say that I would be curious to get the input of whoever manage, would be managing those trees. Or whatever we put in there for talent, because I've been in conversations with departments that manage trees, particularly trees and medians, and it's sort of becoming something they're frowning on, though they like the trees, but they consider it to be quite hazardous work, especially as the trees get bigger for the for the employees who are working on them in the median as well as, you know, if you get larger branches that start coming over the highway and it's, they're just, it's in meetings I've been in, it's been more and more, I'm hearing it considered as, uh, unfortunately we not something that's wanting to be supported because of that, the risk of during the maintenance aspect of it. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a consideration.
Uh, Member Clark, I'm going to go ahead and jump over to you because I assume, uh, your hand is up for a follow-up on that. Is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if the people that you were hearing from, uh, about these, um, considerations were arborists or not. Or other city staffers, I'm guessing, um.
Well, the arborists are, are in the, in the room, I can say that.
Yeah, okay.
They're not, it's not purely an arborist conversation, though.
Yeah, okay. Well, um, yeah, I would just say I, I absolutely want to see, um, tree branches overhanging Highway ninety nine and, um, uh, that is the desired future condition, uh, in my, um, and I think, you know, uh, trees can be safely maintained even in the middle of a road and the benefits, uh, that they provide are um, are a much greater scale than just adding another tree to a park. Um, uh, you know, the value of, of, uh, shading, shading those big areas of asphalt is disproportionate. Um, uh, and, um, so anyway, I I will, you know, continue to, um, advocate for that. And I think, I think, you know, uh, crews that are used to doing arborist work, they can, um, they know how to take the appropriate safety precautions and, um, you know, I think value as, as they are doing that work or valuing the function and, and understanding the functions that the trees in central medians provide. And yeah, Medford does have some really nice ones, um, that I, uh, admire, so.
Thank you, Council, uh, Member Clark. I, 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 I really lean, um, to that as well. Um, uh, that the benefit far outweighs any, any concerns, but I, I would want to know if ODOT decided to change their mind. They, since it's their property, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter whether we have a district over it or not, um, to help financially to plant trees if they don't want them, uh, we don't get them, but um, hey, uh, I wanted to, uh, ask a quick question of, um, Jordan, when you're doing your financial analysis for the future revenue of, um, uh, of, um, of the tax increments, does that include, um, the development at the tax increment contribution, uh, of Gateway? Because I think Gateway, at one point in time, I recall that Gateway was, uh, described as not going to be contributing towards, uh, you know, ta- as a taxing, um, as taxing properties, and then it was designed differently so that it now is, and is that, is that being calculated in?
It's being calculated in under the assumption that the majority of the acreage on Gateway will be affordable housing. And affordable housing is not, uh, tax property tax.
So that's a, yeah. Uh, okay, that's interesting because I think there, I think we made a distinction at some point in time that's different than that, Jordan, and I think we should look at that again, um, in that low income housing or like subsidized Jackson County Housing Authority type housing is, is, has no, uh, revenue. Uh, resource, but, um, affordable housing um, can, and, uh, so I, I hope we can have further discussion because I think that impacts um, our ability to calculate housing on, on the Suncrest piece and could also be a contribution from the Chuck Roberts piece, and I think it impacts the financial uh, the financial analysis. I mean, I suppose we could just make the assumption that none of those would have, um, tax income, and if they do, it would just be beneficial, but boy, I think when we were entertaining, um, I'd have to go back and look at the record, um, but I, I do know at one point in time it was determined that they would have um, uh, tax income. Um, go ahead.
My one, my one just thought with that is that in the event the affordable housing does pay property tax, it is at the margin on the grand scale of urban renewal as a whole, given the size of the district that we are proposing. It would be a marginal impact on the end, um, and the end financial results. And I would recommend to council use that as a decision swear. Um, since the majority of the tax increment financing that'll be occurring is through the fire rebuild specifically. And that's on a much larger scale than any single property.
Uh, fair enough. Um, okay, uh, Count, uh, Member Clark?
Yeah, I'm risk, risking, uh, beating a dead horse here, but, um, but I'm, I, I, I accept and appreciate the idea that if we have a proposed median, uh, project, we do a minor amendment, claim a strip across the highway. That makes sense so long as this boundary that we're looking at goes up to the curb and allows us to work with the sidewalks and those areas immediately adjacent to the pavement. Um, because if we don't have the opportunity to do that, then what's a loss of a lot of opportunity? Um, if we can do that with this boundary and use, um, minor amendments for proposed, uh, median additions. And there may be only one or two or three spots that, that could accommodate them. I know you can't just do that everywhere, but I do think there probably are some other spaces that could accommodate them and, uh, I just want to keep that door open, but I, I think the minor amendment process does that. I just want to make sure that we can work with, uh, with the sides of the highway, um, you know, from, with, within the, uh, within the boundary.
All right, looks like everybody's, uh, had, we've had great discussion, um, good comments. Uh, is there any other questions or comments before, um, let's see? Uh, what action are you looking for? Well, we're in a, uh, special session, so, um, you, we could take action of some kind. What action are you looking for tonight, uh, Jordan? I don't see it on the agenda.
I am looking for the council to confirm what boundary outline. to confirm what boundary outline they'd like to move forward with at this time.
I'm just trying to think of the uh, the way to get through this um most expediently and I just think uh, I'll just take it uh one at a time. And we'll look for a consensus on all of it. Um, you don't need a vote tonight because you, right, you're just looking for a district to do your financial analysis on. Is that correct?
Correct. So if we do not do the vote tonight, I will request a vote on Wednesday night so that I can send the boundary off to the legal description part of the process.
That's right. Uh, you said that earlier. Do you want to do that now?
Let's go ahead and establish all those areas that are for sure by council. And then when I return on Wednesday, I can answer Council Clark's question about where does the highway edge extend to? We can formally adopt at that point.
All right, Council Prestizo?
Yeah, along those lines, um. I'm, I'm concerned about the ball fields that I just want to confirm that they do have another location that's viable that they're they are planning to move to. I was very fond of and Little League was very important to me when I was growing up and there's been a lot of community effort in there and I just like to make sure that they do have a place to land. And then to me, that would be like a win-win. So someone could look into that and confirm.
Council Prestizo, I can share info on that one. The Little League has expressed interest in joining with the school district on their Culver Road property. Um, however, that is not a for sure um outcome. Though we will know, you know, for sure in the next couple of years if that transition happens.
Council Clark?
Yeah, this is gonna be the last one. Um, but we were discussing earlier about how you could um draw the boundary um uh, you know, incongruent with parcel boundary lines if you're going through a um, an area that's not part of the tax base. So uh, I think we were discussing that in terms of Chuck Roberts, but the same would be true on ninety nine. So if there is a gap between where the boundary is shown and the curb of the highway. Couldn't we redraw that to add whatever it is five, six feet from the um, from the edge of the uh adjacent parcel up to where the curb is and not um, not have any problem with uh with, um, I mean, is that, is that, is that a possible option? Uh, I guess that, and that is a question probably for Elaine.
I, I believe that is, yes. I, I believe um, I mean, w- we would have to verify with the surveyor, but I believe it can be stated from curb to property line is included within the urban renewal area.
Right, that would, that would satisfy my um concerns.
Okay, um, so. I, I too, I, I have a follow-up point um from Council Prestizo. I agree, it's important for us to, to know uh, that, that Little League has a future and I don't think drawing um, drawing the urban renewal district would uh, would preclude that anymore than it would. You know, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, that uh, we'd have to do something with that property other than what it's being used for. Just means that it would not, uh, what we know is that without it urban renewal can't participate on that property without a major am- amendment. With it on there, it may or may not include a change to that property. And that's, I think, important consideration.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. I just think we need um to be cognizant of the Little League issue and just make sure that people know where, that that's a consideration and that hopefully as this unwinds, if that part of Chuck Roberts is in the urban renewal, um, that the, uh, the future of the Little League will be solidified wherever they may end up going. So.
Yeah, that's great.
That all sorts out.
That brings me to a really important question um that I, I never thought of before until just now. Um, Elaine? Um, it, or, or Jordan, um, would, I mean, there have been many cases where urban renewal helps to relocate. Um, who was there before is literally consider, would that be considered a public property thing uh where we'd need permission from the other jurisdictions if if they got space over in Culver and they needed some additional help to move and build, rebuild their their new building, that'd be something that an urban renewal would be able to participate in. And I mean, I, I think of the time we helped Camelot move, for example, and, and purchase their property and all that. I, would that be something that a urban renewal agency could participate in? And if so, would it would it require uh, the process that we've talked about?
I can tell you well for sure on Wednesday, but it's my understanding of the statute that uh recreational facilities do not fall under the public building part of the statute. Um, and, and I've given that interpretation a couple of times to different cities, so I'll recheck that before um, you make a, a final determination on Wednesday, but I um, I think spending money on fields and relocating as long as it's within the boundary is acceptable to use urban renewal money to do that. And doesn't re- uh, trigger the public building requirement.
Great, thanks. Again, I don't think at the foregone conclusion one way or the other, but it's nice to know. Um, all right, uh. So I think the easiest way to go about this unless somebody uh has another idea is just, well, I'll just go through each one of them and um we'll look for a consensus for them to work off of. I think, uh, does anybody disagree with the proposed base? So seeing no disagreement with the proposed base, I'll take that as a consensus to move forward on that. And I think that action alone just sort of takes uh, takes anything that was in the previous boundary off the table. Um, and then add on number one, does anybody oppose add-on number one? That would be the hazardous fuels pathways projects on public properties, those things that make us less fire vulnerable, more resilient, more sustainable. We saw that happen on Wagner Creek in that area that was improved. And how it faced the fire. And how it's recovering. All right, there are no oppositions to add-on number one, so I'll take that as a unanimous consensus to move forward with that piece. All right, add-on number two, hazardous fuels pathways and projects on private property. Are there any objections to supporting private property towards greater fire resilience and better sustainability on that front? I see no objection to add-on number two. I'll take that as a unanimous consensus to move forward with that. Add-on number three is uh, the district that will support central business district fire recovery. And is there any objection to that section? Seeing none. I'll take that as unanimous consensus for that piece as well. So it looks like all three pieces are uh, the, the base plus the additional add-ons are um, are what we want to, to move forward on, Jordan. Does anybody want to um add on the Chuck Roberts piece at this time or the Highway ninety nine piece at this time? Council Penomarif?
Well, I, I do want to keep our options open on, on the, the Chuck Roberts piece and, and the Highway ninety nine piece, depending how the, how the research pans out. But I'm, I'm very interested in, in having urban renewal help um, have the ability to help in future in both of those.
All right, I, I, Jordan, you have, you have a list of questions that you feel will cover pretty much everything that we've asked. Is there anything?
I would love to get a, just a temperature on the Chuck Roberts inclusion because I would rather err on including it in the complete analysis, given the acreage size and then taking it out later would be easier rather than adding it in later. If that makes sense.
By take a temperature, you want me to ask for consensus at this time? Okay, so.
Roberts.
Uh, to include, okay. So is there anybody who objects? Let me, let me rephrase that. Uh. Is, who among us would like to include Chuck Roberts at this time? Uh, okay, I have uh, Penomarif, Prestizo, Clark, Byers, Greider. Um, and uh, given, if I were given the chance to support it, I also would support it.
Great, thank you, everyone.
You know, Jordan, if I could just add that, um, you know, part of the narrative for that is just the flexibility to support um, a project and in the event of a move, the flexibility to support uh, the um, the Little League in their move, should it be uh allowed? Um, I think that those are um really good reasons. Council Byers, you still have your hand up. Did you?
I just have a, I have a question about that. So you've reached a consensus among us all on the general urban renewal boundary area that we are looking at, including three add-ons, including this like add-on three point five with Chuck Roberts Park. However, I would like to confirm that this isn't an official decision on the boundary. Correct?
Right, we're gonna, um, I think she's looking for the official on Wednesday.
Right, great. Because I do have further consideration about Chuck Roberts. I'm open to hearing more, but I do have further consideration.
Great. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, Jordan, uh, with that, I think we'll just call the meeting at six uh twenty eight. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, and we will see you Wednesday at six forty-five in person at Town Hall.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, all.